Okay, you're good to go.
Okay. Uh, May twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, Forest Grove School District Board of Directors meeting is called to order at five thirty-seven P M. We'll do a roll call of board members present, so Mark Everett, uh, present.
Kate Miranda, present.
Brad.
Present.
Val.
Present.
Uh, Narcey. Okay, we're missing Narcey. I think she'll join us probably here shortly. Uh, the school board will take public comment via Google Form. The link is on the board meeting, meeting page on the district website. The designated email address was also added in comments received while we, and we'll be able to read at the appropriate time on the agenda. So this time we'll do the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic.
The Republic, which stands.
Is one nation, one and one and God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, approval of tonight's agenda?
I will be approved tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, okay. Uh, all those, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I didn't do a roll call vote on that one, Kathy. I think all four of us are ayes.
That's okay.
Sorry. I, I gotta, I gotta pull up my, I'm, I'm behind a little. I'll get it. Okay. So let's see, uh, the next item on the, uh, tonight's agenda is correspondence and celebrations, but I, I think maybe we'll see, uh, maybe we'll move Siobhan ahead of that. And Siobhan, if you have a student representative report?
I, I do.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it, it, okay, just go for it?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Today's report is very small because I do not actually go to any Forest Grove schools right now, so I don't know exactly what's going on. But from my inside scoop, Kirkman told me that A S B is starting their eighth grade interviews, and they're working on finalizing, uh, the new senior activities, so trying to figure out how those are gonna look with the, with the quarantine. And then, um, the new executive board for this coming year's A S B is finalized now. And so Noe Alvarez is going to be, I, I think I already said that, but I'm gonna say it again. It's going to be next year's A C president, so he'll take my spot. Um, I don't really, I don't have any other updates besides that it still feels like the high school is doing a good job. I'm still getting updates, good communication, even though I'm graduated, which is, it feels nice.
Okay, great. Thanks very, very much, Siobhan. Um, and thanks for being with us still, so even though you're a graduate, that's pretty impressive, so.
It's hard, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Um, okay, so let's see, uh, correspondence and celebrations and calendar notes and superintendent report, I'll just, uh, Dave, Mr. Parker, I'll just hand it over to you.
Perfect, thank you. The, um, couple of just calendar notes and, um, we're, we, the high school is still gonna do June fourth for their, uh, for their spotlight on, um, I'm forgetting its name right now, the spotlight, spotlight of stars or the,
Spotlight on success.
That's it, thank you. Spotlight on success. They're gonna do it a little bit differently where they're gonna have kids come through a drive-up kind of situation. But, um, they would like us to, um, be there and we can be part of the folks, um, talking with kids as they're coming up to pick up their stuff. And I'll get more information, but I wanted to throw it on your calendars. June sixth will be the graduation. It'll be a video, um, a, a video, production. So there's not a whole lot, we will, Mark, we will have you, um, kind of film up your, your speech and such, but for the most part, um, that'll be about it for our participation in that event. There is some places, again, for us to, um, come be part of their staff and congratulate folks in the drive-through line. Those are the two big dates that I know are coming up for us right now.
Dave, what was the date for Spotlight on Success again?
Still June fourth. I gotta, um, I'll get you the, I think we've been passing the times there, but I just wanted you to know that there is a part for us to play, um, kind of welcoming folks and congratulating them as they're coming through the line.
Great.
Then I thought I'd give folks kind of an update on the budget and kind of where I know I've been communicating both in communication, um, on Fridays to the staff and to you, but just kind of wanted to let you know each day seems to get a little bit more information. Last Wednesday, the state economists came out with a forecast of the deficit, um, to the anticipated revenues that they're expecting. The forecast was a deficit of about two point seven billion dollars. Um, two weeks ago, the budget committee, our budget committee approved a budget proposal that was predicated on the already approved state budget of about nine billion dollars. Currently, this is the amount of money we are anticipating it'll take to continue everything that we're doing at our current service level and maintain our board policy of an eight percent any fund balance. So between that nine billion dollar that we adopted budget and then this deficit, we're gonna have to figure out what this budget reduction is gonna look like. Um, if nothing is done by the legislature, um, to reduce that deficit, then we're gonna need to reduce expenditures at the start of the school year. Um, COSA has calculated the total general fund and lottery budget deficit to be about eight hundred and sixty-seven million. That's actually some good news for us because we were thinking that number was gonna be somewhere around one point eight billion. So it's quite a bit less than the, some of the initial, um, uh, numbers that were coming to us from O D E. They've also forecasted, um, on last Wednesday, they forecasted that the corporate activity tax will still bring in about one point two billion dollars. We are anticipating that it was gonna bring in one point six billion, so, um, this is about sixty percent of what we were thinking it was gonna be, which is actually a better number than we thought it was gonna be. So this is, um, again, kind of some, some, some better news for us. Based on this current, the current statute, the first five hundred and eighty million of that cat tax, the one point two billion, needs to go straight into the state school fund. That was part of the law when it was passed. That leaves somewhere around just about half of the, um, the one point two billion dollars that will go into the Student Success Act. And from there, there will be money being fed into the student, um, investment account, which is all the planning that we did. Now, I don't know exactly what that's gonna look like yet. Um, but there is money coming through that system. Based on, um, based on everything that we see going on right now, we're anticipating that the state school for fund reduction is gonna mean, is gonna be about four hundred and ninety million. This is about three hundred and eight million in the general fund and about a hundred and twenty million in lottery fund losses and about sixty-three million dollars in some, um, the corporate activity taxes that they were, um, have been, um, talking about. Four hundred and ninety is actually less than, less than what we were expecting. We were expecting, uh, um, what we had been hearing was closer to like six hundred and fifty million. So this is gonna, um, this is gonna mean that somewhere around two hundred and ninety-six million dollars is gonna come to the student investment account, which is, um, again, good news for us. I don't know exactly what this legislature is gonna do, but there's seems to be a, there is a clear pathway for them to get us back towards this current service level of nine billion dollars. Even with these deficits, there's rainy day funds, there's, um, this Student Success Act money, so th- this next little piece here is gonna be really important for, um, how this all ends up, whether we're gonna be making eight to ten percent cuts or whether we're gonna make zero to five percent cuts. What we've heard so far is that the governor's gonna convene a special session. I just heard today that there's no way that it'll, it'll happen before the middle of June because of, um, appointments and scheduling conflicts that they already have down in Salem. So that means I think we can anticipate it's gonna happen sometime probably late June, hopefully, um, early July. Um, there is, they are talking about that Measure ninety-eight will also be impacted. It looks like we're gonna, um, lose probably about forty-one percent of our Measure ninety-eight, or could, I should say. Again, these are all decisions that the legislature has to firm up, but we'll go through and start looking at, um, how that might impact us. Currently, last year, we got one point, one point six million dollars in Measure ninety-eight funds, and we're thinking that it's gonna be closer to the million-dollar range this, um, next year around. With all of this said, the governor originally, um, instructed all of her departments to make it, to start planning for eight point five percent cuts across the board. I think with all of the news that we're hearing today, what this number is really gonna be closer to is four percent. Um, in a biennium budget, so closer somewhere around eight percent, um, if there are no more adjustments made to it. So all in all, this isn't, um, there's still lots of work for us to do here, and there's lots of challenges out in front of us. But, um, there's been some improvement in our numbers. They're still not where I want them, but, um, all in all, there's some, some good information. I'll send you these, I'll send this in a piece of paper so you can read it, because I know I threw out number after number there, but I wanted to make sure that I kind of informed you all what I've learned so far. Questions that I might take about the budget, and then I'll move on to my last, um, piece.
Well, I have a question, Dave.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know, you know, I've been reading the newspaper is all and maybe a couple of O S B emails, but, but, you know, the next biennium, they say they're gonna be down as well.
Yes.
And so, you know, I don't know if there's been any talk, uh, you know, about not using all of rainy day funds or funds held back for this at this point because, you know, and holding them off for the next biennium. Has there been any talk about that?
There's been a, a lot of talk, and that's the central decision right now, is that they are expecting that not in, um, next year, but in the next biennium, twenty-one to twenty-three, they're expecting a five billion dollar loss in revenues.
Yeah.
And in the biennium after that, they're expecting a three point four billion dollar loss in revenues. So the, um, they are absolutely kind of having this conversation about they've got one point seven billion dollars in rainy day funds. What is the right way, the best way to, um, account for what could be down revenue forecasts for the next four to five years?
Right.
Um, so that is absolutely the, um, conversation that the governor's office and the state economists are having right now is what is the right amount of rainy day funds to use in this first year?
Okay, okay, yes. That's the only question I have, any, if anyone else has a question.
I guess the only, I just have a comment. I, I guess the only comment that I would make would be that I'm trying to come up with a timeline to reconvene the budget process. Once we have the number, it sounds like it's probably the first of July, or the first part of July anyway. Dave, what do you think?
Um, actually, the last item on today's agenda is I've kind of drafted up some loose, um, activities for, for, to do exactly that, Brad, which is to talk about when and where we would wanna do things. And that's exactly kind of what I'm seeing happen, but I wanted to kind of run you through that and then get your feedback and and add anything that you want.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Perfect. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank, um, you all for approving the contract then in the last board meeting. Um, this will allow me to formally retire at the end of this year and begin working back and, um, using Senate Bill ten forty-nine is kind of, um, what my plan is. I have no plans in stopping working in the coming years. Um, I'm still completely committed to my job as the superintendent of the Forest Grove School District, and I'll continue to work all, in any hours that need to be worked to, um, get us through what are gonna be some tough financial times. Um, really, there's not any real changes for me. It's just really some changes in the business office about what they're gonna do with where they're sending my PERS payments, um, whether they're sending it where they're normally or now under this new law, it creates this new PERS stability account. Now my PERS portions will be, um, going towards, towards those accounts. But other than that, I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate you, uh, looking at my contract and approving it last week.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
And with that, I think we're on to our next item.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Um, unscheduled public appearances, the next agenda item. The board appreciates community members sharing information during public comments. Are there any comments that have been received?
Yes, there was one, uh, email that was received, but there are no comments through the Google form, so I can go ahead and read that, uh, email that was sent in. Um, it is from Mary Whitmore. It says, uh, "Thanks to the board for making this opportunity possible. I was very encouraged recently by reading instruction success highlighted in the national news. The superintendent has the documentation. I advocated for phonics years ago, and I want to reach out again. I know we can do better than a literacy score of thirty-eight percent in third grade. I trust that at this point, there's not anything the board would, wouldn't do to provide more opportunities to emerging readers. I'm asking two things. One, I'd like to observe current reading instruction in situ in a variety of our classrooms. And two, I'd like to add information on explicit phonics to parent resources page on our website. Thanks again for your guidance, especially considering, considering the historical challenge of COVID nineteen."
Okay. Well, thank you.
So I'm happy.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, I'm happy to follow up on that. Um, again, we have explicit phonics instruction in, um, our current literacy program. It comes through, um, oh, I'm, um, John, I'm forgetting the acronyms now.
Pearson, uh, but Ekri specifically.
Right. Through Ekri and a cou- couple of other places. So I'll, I'll, I've been meeting with Mary, and I will go back to, um, meet with her again. I think explicit phonics is, um, the science is coming out pretty, pretty clearly that our, um, instruction has to have, especially for readers that are struggling, explicit phonics, phonics instruction. Um, with that said, um, we have these elements built in, and as we begin to look at new, um, um, curriculum, that will certainly be a, a large portion of what we're doing. Um, so I'm happy to follow up with Mary on this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dave. Um, okay, the next, uh, the next agenda item is the consent agenda. Consent agenda is made up of routine, non-controversial items to be voted on under one motion. Are there any items within the consent items a board member or the superintendent wishes to discuss separately? Uh, hearing none, uh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I stand.
Okay, I'll second that.
Second.
Okay, all those, uh, uh, we'll, we'll do a roll call vote. I'm, uh, I am a yes. Uh, Brad?
Yes.
Uh, Kate?
Yes.
Uh, Val?
Yes.
And Narcey?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, on to action items, uh, next agenda. It looks like we have three actions. John O'Neal will be presenting, well, it looks like all three of them, so. The first one is C I M A M O U for twenty twenty-one. Uh, I hand it over to you, John.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, "The district administration requests board approval per board policy of the amount of eighty thousand dollars for SEMA. They do our district's, uh, translation services as well as our interpretation services, and we're requesting that eighty thousand dollars, um, be budgeted for the twenty twenty-one school year. This amount reflects a reduction amount from prior years of twenty thousand due to the increased site and district capacity for Spanish literate staff to help." the increased site and district capacity for Spanish literate staff to help with these efforts. The amount requested for SEMA translation services are for at-school events, parent conferences, and other school curricular needs. We have utilized SEMA translation services since two thousand and six, we're very happy with them, and we're asking for approval for eighty thousand dollars for the coming school year. You have there as a reference, the memorandum of understanding. You can see the price drop. We actually expended to a hundred and twenty-one thousand this year due to the closure and the need for immediate translation services or educational packets that our teachers and coordinators did this year. But I ran this by building principals, and they are confident that they could go ahead and absorb the staff, the, the cost reduction. As you know, we're looking for any means possible to make reductions for the coming year, and we're confident that we can, other than unforeseen circumstances, we think we can hit that eighty thousand dollar mark for this coming school year.
Hey, John?
Yes, sir.
This is Brad. What, what did we spend last year?
About a hundred. Eileen, if you can help me on this, I think she calculated about a hundred and twenty-one thousand. It jumped up at the end, again, because we sent so much for translation services. And I'm sorry, Eileen, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I don't have that off the top of my head, no.
Okay, okay.
But I can give it to you.
About a hundred and twenty thousand last year, so we're anticipating a reduction, then?
Yeah, this year. We were going to hit probably about a hundred, hundred and ten, but what we're trying to do is be more intentional with the use of our staff, our bilingual, bilingual staff to help with that.
So, John, will that, will that mean that, I mean, that must mean that our staff will be compensated for their work on this? And so, I guess what I'm asking is, we're going to pay C-I-M-A eighty thousand, that's our agreement, but will there be other costs?
There could be other costs, but what we're really shooting for, Mark, is that our bilingual staff and administrators that we have can go ahead and provide those services for us.
Okay.
I have a question. Will the staff do a blue, blue time sheet?
If it's outside of their duty days, Kate, if it's outside their duty times? Yes, like for interpretation for parent conferences. We've always used some of our staff, we feel that it's necessary. Oh, thank you, Eileen, it's a hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. And again, that jumps significantly to the packets that needed to be translated, curriculum. We were doing extensive amount of translations, and I got to give a call out to SEMA. They did an amazing job. They were working around the clock over the weekend to help us with that yeoman's event. But we're pretty confident we can get it down to eighty thousand, and that's the target that we're looking for.
Okay, the only comment I would have is that I'd like to make sure that we track the true cost of this over the course of next year.
Absolutely.
You know, that, that's all I would say, so.
Mark?
Yeah.
So, do those, does our staff slash teachers, do they get like a stipend? I heard something about a blue sheet, but if they are required to be bilingual for their particular position, and there's this added work, is there like a stipend that goes along with it? And has a union been involved with this? This information, I just get a little nervous about expecting your bilingual, our bilingual staff to add on more to their place. It is quite a bit of additional work when you have to do that. So I'm just wondering if the union's been involved, or it doesn't come to, it's not a surprise to people.
Kevin, do you want to weigh in?
Well, certainly, as John said, when it is asked of staff to do this type of work during their regular duty schedule or regular work schedule, then that's part of kind of this, their job duties as, as it comes up. I think in terms of, we do have a translation rate of pay that is different. So, as John said, when we do ask people to either do translation that goes beyond their regular workday, or for some of these conferences, and that, Narce, has been communicated, and we have, I, I'm not aware of any issues that have come up with our union about asking some of our, its primary or classified staff that have been asked to do some translating for parent-teacher conferences specifically.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for John on this action item? If there are no other questions, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one SEMA MOU as presented.
I second, Narce.
Okay. Moved and seconded, so we'll do a roll call vote. I'm a yes. Let's see, Brad?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Narce?
Yes.
And Val?
Yes.
Okay, the, the motion is approved. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is the youth contact MOU, and that is again, item number two from John. Go ahead, John.
Okay, thank you. The district, as you know, contracts out services for universal prevention for drugs and alcohol, counseling services for individual students at Forest Grove High School, Neil Armstrong, Calc and Create as needed. These contracted services are extremely important in providing additional services to meeting individual student use incidences and referrals for support. These services have been in place since nineteen eighty-four, that's the year I graduated high school, and have been instrumental in providing assessment and intervention services to middle and high school students to our district. Through this grant, the last couple of years, middle school and high school students will receive this support. So with youth contact, they have written an additional grant, and by us contracting what's before you, we receive also an additional point five re-staffing to support high school students, and point five part of the middle school students as well. And in speaking with Aw and Karen, both principals provide strong support for continuing this invaluable partnership. And what was really impactful last year, we were, youth contact, they actually do the hiring, they were able to find a bilingual, bicultural, phenomenal counselor for that additional service, and she did a great job, so, very impactful. I would also like to call out the fact that some of our current counseling staff served with our district previously in terms of being a youth contact counselor, and they get to work with our teachers and staff and administrators, and then they apply for open positions with our district, and we were very fortunate to have them with us. Brooke Gale at the high school is the most recent addition. So, we're asking the board for continued MOU for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Hey, John, this is Brad.
Yeah.
What, what's the dollar amount?
Eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
So, and what exactly are we getting for that ninety grand?
Yeah, basically, one full FTE plus an additional point five from another grant.
From what grant?
Youth contact has,
What grant?
Youth contact has written an additional grant, and what they do is, they supplement an additional point five for us in addition to this. So it's been a real bargain the last couple of years.
Okay, so how many slots did we fill last year?
One point five.
I don't know.
But.
How many kids received services? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, how many kids? Go ahead.
Quite a few. I'm going to defer Osvaldo, I asked him to be on, and as well as Karen. Oz, do you know off the top of your head how many kids have been served at the middle school level? You're on mute.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. There's been quite a few, especially now this year, we were able to add value to the position since the person was trained in drug and alcohol evaluation. So that means that we did not need to send students who were affected by this to outside agencies. We could serve them within the school, which is part of our plan. So I could say that throughout the year, this could be easily between forty to sixty students.
From just the middle school, right?
Yeah, just the middle school.
Yeah, so it's.
I'm being suspended or spelled for drug offenses or alcohol offenses.
So I guess I'm not asking what, what it could be, I'm asking what it was last year.
Yeah, I.
To give us a baseline on what we're spending, my question is really about what the baseline is, what was it last year?
Yeah, I think that's information.
I think that's a good question, because if my memory serves me right, the students that can be sort of counseled by youth contact counselor, they have pretty strict criteria about who, who they can provide service to.
Right.
And so I do think now that the number of students that it's serving for this dollar amount is, is a good question.
I can definitely get that for you.
Okay, because they do have criteria. They have criteria for who they can serve.
I would echo you, this is Narce, I would echo needing some more data, and also some demographics. So, you know, it sounds like we have a one point five FTE that's ninety thousand dollars. That's a, that's almost like a one, I mean, obviously, it's a position and a half.
No, actually, that's, no, 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 that ninety thousand, it costs us a hundred and twenty for a full-time. We're getting one point five for ninety, that's a steal in the FTE, and we have no.
Is that correct, Dave, that it's one twenty?
Yeah, that's what we're averaging right now.
Okay, I guess it depends on,
Yeah.
what year the person is, because I was doing the math on it, and I don't, you know.
You're right, it would be, that's an average amount that looks across our entire salary table. But what I can tell you is, is that without this position, we don't have any drug and alcohol counseling. We would love to build some of these components into our schools with this SSA grant, but this, this would be, this is going to be a challenge. I totally get, and we can come back to you with information, but of all the places that we, I mean, you just saw that we brought you what was a hundred and twenty thousand dollar contract, we bought you an eighty. I mean, we're certainly looking at beginning to reduce expenses. I'm not sure this is where I would save any amount of money because of what's going on with drug and alcohol in our school systems. This, this would concern me a lot. Hiring to that drug and alcohol would cost us more, that's my guess.
I guess I'm not asking the question, Dave, in regards of saving money. I'm asking the question in regards of making sure that we're real clear about what we're getting for our money. So we're making, we know we're going to make reductions, what are we spending, what are we spending our money on, and what are we deliverables for that cash? That's why I asked the question. It's not about really saving money, it's about what exactly are, are we getting for the money that we're spending? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. Again, what would, our action here would be to hire our own, because we can't really deal with not having it.
Right.
So, but I can bring you the numbers on what that comparison is, because that's a, that's a, that's a good question.
So when, when we, when we have a contract, and we sign the contract, and we say this is what we, what our expectations are, this is where we are right now, what do we expect from the contractors for this year in terms of what's successful and what's not successful? I mean, it's just a matter of holding people accountable for the contract.
If I may add, for me, it's just seeing, seeing the data, how many students were served at the particular, it's the high school and the middle school, right? I mean, now?
Yep.
Those two? So it's data, you know, how many students were served, demographics, gender, and is it making a difference? Is there an assessment component to it? Are our kids getting what we want them to get the help, or? And, and I just looked at their website, and I mean, they do have all their information in Spanish. Are they providing that information in Spanish as well for, and is it just for the student, or is it also for the parent? I'm just trying to.
Yes.
So I see, I see Karen on the line, so I don't know. We, we'll come back with some info, but I don't know if Karen wants to give us a little bit more information about kind of how this fits into her school.
Yeah, absolutely. So the second youth contact counselor that we got this past year was bilingual, bicultural, and was a huge help in reaching out to a lot of our families. We, in our EBS meetings, twice a month, they fill up very quickly. We could honestly use another two positions in family outreach and, and counseling. They get filled up, like I said, very quickly, and are invaluable, to be honest.
So, I think the, the question that I hear Brad saying is, do we want to table this? We'll get some more data for you, we'll bring back the demographics part of this, and then bring it back at the next meeting. Is that what we'd like to do?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Okay, we are last, let's see if I can get to our last action. Our last action item this evening is the Create Contract for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, and this is again presented by John. So, John?
Yeah, Create is a longtime alternative education program that serves up to thirty-three students. Most of the students served are high school age, and most are referred to Create as a last alternative, if you will. They have, many of them have tried Calc, they've tried online blended, other avenues, and this has been pretty impactful for engaging students for many years. It started historically over where Calc is now. Carmen ran it for years, and then we transitioned to new leadership a few years after I became high school principal, and Geneva Jackson served as the director. She's still with Create and is teaching, she stepped back, and Olivia Wild is, is serving as the current director. But most students served are of high school age. However, we have eight slots reserved for middle school students that are in need in temporary education placements, as determined by the middle school admin team and primarily Osvaldo Garcia Contreras, our principal. Create provides a valuable alternative resource that is housed at Central Cultural, which is centrally located in Cornelius. Students served in this program are the district's most at-risk student population, and like I said, they have been unsuccessful at the comprehensive middle school and high school programs. Create operates on a one-year contract, providing services to the Forest Grove School District and banks. Last year had one student, and I'm not sure if they had any this year. This year's annual evaluation, the board will recall that we usually bring you an evaluation. We had one scheduled, and then COVID hit, so we just couldn't follow through with. So we just couldn't follow through with that this year, but we will definitely resume that. And the Northwest E S D leads that annual evaluation for us. Create is registered educational program with the Oregon Department of Education. Again, the contract there is for your review. The primary decisions made for this coming year are just the dates for which the new annual contract will be in existence. Any questions?
I have one. How do you measure success with these thirty three students?
That's a great question, Kate. Primarily, first and foremost, that they still maintain enrollment, that they are actively engaged in their learning, that they attend. We do have lower attendance, much lower attendance than the comprehensive high school. But again, these are students that are on the verge of dropping out in most cases. But we also track credits. Also, we add for the high school students and for the middle school students, we track grades, students attendance and grades. I do have Brian Burke, the assistant principal who oversees the Create program for the high school and Oz is on as well for any feedback or additional questions.
John, I have a question.
Yes.
So does youth contact provide services for Create since, you know, it would make sense that they would create. I mean, I'm just questioning.
I believe so. I want to, I saw Oz say yes, and I mean, nod his head. And Brian, do they, I believe, yeah, they do. Student that is put up or suspension or expulsion for subsubstance that's part of board policy where they're referred to this support. The idea is so that they don't repeat and that they get the support they need for effective refusal skills.
If I may add also in this, you know, I don't know if this is needs to be told or not, but my daughter, who's a senior at Pacific University, started volunteering at Create. And then works a couple of hours and I mean, she comes home in tears about, you know, the suffering these kids are going through. But nevertheless, nevertheless, she says that one of the things that she realizes is that the kids that she's helping, because she loves math and science and all of that, that the kids are, that she's helping on a daily basis right now have been, is working better online than in person. So anyway, or whatever that means, for whatever that's worth.
If I may, if I may share, John, is that okay?
That's up to Board Chair.
Yeah, that's fine, Oswald. Go ahead.
Speaking of statistics, I can share a little bit of that. I mean, at the middle level, we have eight students at this present moment. Sixty seven percent of them are Hispanic and fifty percent of them are E L L. And thirty eight percent of them are special needs students. So one of the advantages of this center is that it allows us to go there and provide those special services, those kids. So if there is a student, for whatever reason, was expelled and, you know, that kid, we still are responsible for, you know, providing that student with that education. It is almost, you know, it is extremely difficult to provide that support when the student is in home instruction or online. So the best way for us to be able to provide E L L services, if the student is E L L and special needs services is when we have them housed at Create. So I just kind of wanted to share that piece of information.
Board Chair Mark, do you mind if Brian provides some feedback as well?
No, no, please, yeah.
I was just looking at our senior data and so Create has fourteen seniors currently enrolled and six of them have already finished their credits. So six of those will graduate here in June. The other eight are pretty unique situations. They're they're usually actually students who didn't finish in four years and then came back during their fifth year, pretty far behind, honestly. So I don't know that they will finish in June, but it is possible. Create does offer summer school for free to students as well, to a certain number of high school students. So hopefully a few more, but that that number of six is is a big improvement from last year, honestly. And back to where we were probably three or four years ago, Geneva had it going pretty well there. So six kids who honestly would not have graduated because they, these, when I look at these names, these kids had tried Calc, they had tried several other avenues, but they, six of them will get their diploma.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, any, are there any other questions for John or Oswald or or Brian or or Karen?
The contract have a dollar amount, did it mention, or is that relevant to this conversation?
It does. Well.
Well, per contract, we receive eighty percent. Well, we flow through eighty percent of the dollars and we keep the other set aside. And so we actually make some money with our students from the district. However, this program has the ability to provide services. They do a great job coordinating, like a board member, Narse Rodriguez identified, they work very well with community agencies, Pacific University, Central Cultural, Virginia Garcia, so many services that aren't quantified, you know, in this contract. And they really do help with wraparound services. But the dollar is based on enrollment for the number of kids that they serve for that given month. But Eileen can elaborate more if needed.
So John, I, so eighty percent of the A D M per kid.
Goes to Create, right?
Yeah, Eileen, what what's the dollar amount?
Great. So last year, eighteen nineteen, we had almost twenty seven weights. So that's the average attendance throughout the year. And then demographics on top of that. And then it's eighty percent passed through to create our state school fund. Last year, we spent one hundred and eighty eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. So I I guess my only comment would be that at some point, I mean, in terms of an evaluation process, making, putting together some type of evaluation process in terms of what our expectations are for Create and how we're going to evaluate whether it's been successful or not. I I understand Brian's comment about these six kids wouldn't graduate if they, if Create wasn't there. I get that part of it. I I guess I I guess at some point, when you have a contract like this, what's acceptable in terms of 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 the criteria for evaluation? And I know we've had these discussions in the past, but I I just it's it's a service that I think we need for our district, but I think we need some type of evaluation process. That would be my only comment.
Beyond the annual evaluation, you mean more district rubric?
I would think so. I mean, in terms of what what, how are you, we evaluating whether the program's successful or not? Because I know what our experiences are in terms of being there. I mean, we're not on site. So what what are we doing in terms of evaluating this program? That would be, that would be my only comment. So John, I believe we contract with the E S D and the E S D comes in and does a full evaluation of this program every year. We did not do that this year because of the cancellation of school, but there is an in-depth evaluation on standards of this program every year.
There is. And Bill Rhodes, former superintendent of Wesleyan Wilsonville, longtime assistant superintendent in Hillsborough School District, has served in that external evaluator capacity for us the past couple of years. He was going to do it again this May and then this happened. But bottom line is, I know what Brad's asking, you know, in terms of, you know, how do we monitor success? And I would just respond, you know, having kind of served quasi supervisor of the program at the district level, continued enrollment, making progress. And, you know, it's it's very hard to quantify because each individual student is a separate story. And they have individual challenges that they overcome to graduate or to earn the credits that they need. Again, these are students that it's pretty much their last chance opportunity to be successful because they haven't been successful in other environments. So one thing that we do on a regular basis is Brian Burke and Osvaldo and I meet with Geneva and Olivia and we look at the attendance, we look at credits earned. We talk about individual students' circumstances, getting wraparound services, getting involved and employed, balancing employment with credit acquisition and progress. Also, you know, quite bluntly, drug usage and or lack thereof and getting the supports that they need. Historically, Create was more of a teen parenting program for alternative ed. When I was there, eighty percent of the kids that were enrolled were teen parents. Then we we had that need. That need is not as great. However, we do have this program for, again, the most needy of our students. So again, it's each individual student by student basis, you know, in terms of determining success. We don't really have or have not had, you know, a certain percentage will graduate, a certain percentage will have this number of credits, that sort of thing.
If I may add, Mr. O'Neill, is it is difficult to quantify because we are talking about a group of students who, for many reasons, Create program, from my point of view, is providing a social justice lens and trying to give them another opportunity. So systematically, it makes sense for us. I just did the math very quickly and I might might have done it wrong, but if it's, and I just kind of rounded up numbers. If it's a hundred and eighty eight thousand, let's say, a year, and I think I heard the number seventeen, it's about eleven thousand dollars, you know. It's a lot of dollars that are invested in this particular students. My question is, how much do we spend about a year per head on a student that might have the disability, the second language and the poverty? You know, what's the cost per head per year? So it's kind of to look at it that way. It is going to be most most costly because we're talking about societal issues that for some reason fail these kids, whether it was within the family or the school or the community or whatever it might be. So it's, I'm just giving it that different lens from my perspective.
So I I would just say before we, so I hear what Brad's saying. I mean, part of this long term, how do we in our district work with students that have these struggles? And I think we have visions, Brad, of of building components in the in our system that could address these students, but we don't have that right now. Calc, the space at Calc isn't quite right. We don't have the space at the, or we don't have the F T E. We haven't assigned the program at the middle school, at the high school. I think it's something we would want to build, but right now, there's still fills a need in our organization that we can't really address in the other. We don't have it set up yet in the other parts. So I, but I can acknowledge the fact that, yeah, we still need to figure this out for our district.
Yeah, I guess, Dave, the only reason I bring this up is because, you know, I've been at this for a long time and it seems to be the same same stuff every year. You know what I mean? The same. And I know this is, these are, we're in tough times right now. I get that part of it.
Yeah.
But I I do, you know, or I, in terms of holding people accountable and making sure that we're quantifiable in terms of progress and that we're spending our money on 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 quality services. At some point, even if you contract out services, you need to be able to quantify whether that it was worth our money and that we're being successful with kids. And that's the only reason I, that that's the main reason I bring that up. Copy. Yeah. And and I know I, is Kim online right now? Kim, are you there?
Yeah.
So are we providing I E P services for them onsite or are they coming to us?
They're either coming to us or we sometimes provide onsite depending on how many students we have. So if we have, I would say, you know, five, six students over there, then we have somebody going over there to provide services. If it's less than that, then we have, we're busing them to district office or this year, we provided home instruction services at Calc. So just depending on what the circumstance is. So it is, I mean, it is, go ahead.
So we're not paying them extra for providing services then?
No, they don't provide any services. We are providing them.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would just echo some of what's been said and Banks, we, when I was at Banks, we had some students who would attend Calc or Create. And it did allow some students who had very unique situations to to be successful and in the end move either towards graduation or actually graduate. So so I I do understand that and I understand what what I, maybe Brad and Dave are talking about with, you know, sort of contracting these services out, but down the road somehow, maybe, you know, at another time, bringing these, bringing these services or this option back into the school district, which I think would be great. So. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay. So I will move to, I'll make a motion to approve the the contract for Create for twenty 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 one.
Second.
Okay, I I'm a yes. Brad? Brad?
Yes, Mark.
Okay, sorry. Kate?
Yes.
Narse?
Yes.
And Val?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes. And just just to recap, before we go on, Dave, and leave the action items, the the youth contact was, we're going to have some information at, are we going to have it prior to the next board meeting? Or are we going to have it presented again at the board meeting? Do you know yet?
I just emailed Dave. If you'd like, I can go ahead and forward that on to the board as soon as I get that from Judy Harris.
Okay, okay, great. It's it's just like we have it ahead of time.
So we'll put together some more info, some demographics. What I wrote down was some demographics. And then also some, the, in the contract, there's always stipulations about what their services are, what they do. And so we'll push, we'll get you some, some, some information about what services they provide and the demographics that they're serving.
I I only ask that because in my experience, you know, in I I only ask that because i- in my experience, you know, in working with youth contact. I I it would sometimes be the case that they could not serve a student that I was hoping they would be able to serve. So.
Right.
So I I think it might be good to revisit that.
Yeah, we'll come back to it. So I got your I got your text, Oz, but we'll we'll come back to it. It's all good.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. So thank you, John. And I think uh the next item is on to uh future action or discussion items. And this is uh budget committee participation and supplemental budget process. I think this was what you were alluding to a little earlier, Dave.
Yeah, so I I um started putting some thoughts down on what this might look like when. And I have a more detailed list that has every little like create agenda for this meeting. And I didn't give you that. I gave you kind of a simplified version of this, just so that you could see kind of what the thinking was. And just make sure that there's not some big pieces. I can also give you my more detailed list, but I just thought that'd be overkill. The basic gist of this is um in May, right now, we have just a couple of days left. Our principals have prepared listings of reductions of five, ten and fifteen. And then I will bring them together next Thursday and we'll sit down and start talking through some of the suggestions that they've made. So that's the convene the admin group to review suggested um draft and finalize some kind of draft for the board to look at. At that same time, in the lower part there, late May through June, we're gonna have to start some negotiations with employee groups. Um so we'll be trying to figure out what we're doing. We can't get too far on that until we actually know what the number is. Because it makes right now the swing here, we could be, I can see a clear path to where they get us a nine billion dollar current service level budget. I can also see a pathway to an eight to ten percent cut in our budget. It's too big a swing for us right now for me to go into negotiations until we get a little better indication about where we're at. But I want you to know, we're gonna be working on that this month with our groups as we're trying to get information. Sometime around the middle of June now and probably towards the end of June, I'm expecting to see the exact amount of this deficit to come out of this um this legislature. Because of this special session's only gonna be like one day, they'll they should go into that session kind of knowing what they want to do. I'm hoping that we're gonna get some of that information before the special session, just so we kind of know what they're what the plan, how they how they're gonna try and attack this. Then what I see is in early July, we um we convene the board. We invite the um budget committee members to the meeting. Technically, we don't reconvene the budget committee because that term is passed. But it's fine for us just to invite them into a work session and we'll sit down together. I'll bring kind of the draft of what the um administrators have um talked about. They've all looked at their budgets and said, here's how I think if we have a ten percent cut, here's how we think you should do this. And we'll, as a cabinet, kind of weave that into a proposal. Um at the same time, somewhere in here, I need to run some sort of public process. And I've been talking through whether I head out to some schools, present some of these draft plans, get feedback from our community on this. Um it could be digital, it could be in person, maybe a combination of the two. But we bring that information back to this board and um budget reconvening, not reconvening, but meeting this work session. And then we produce some final recommendations, and that's probably gonna be middle of July, probably um late July. The later this goes, the harder it's gonna be specifically if we get into staffing. Um if we're in the four percent, the five percent, some of our early looks at it, I think we could adjust without um. I think we could get there without getting the class size, but if we're having to make changes in staffing in late July, it is really gonna be a challenge um to do that well. So the big key number here is this, when do we get the exact amount of the deficit? Everything else I can start planning and I can start setting dates as soon as I know when that's gonna happen, the rest of this kind of gets set. Um and so we'll go as fast as we can once we kind of get rolling. Um again, I'll meet with the admin group, we'll kind of finalize up some a dr- some drafts of what it might look like at ten percent, what it might look like at five percent. And then um I'll bring that to the board. And I guess to you, I would ask, have I left out some things? Do we want to punch up? Do you want to give me feedback on the public process about what you would expect? Those are all things like feedback I can take right now and I'll add it into our plan as I finalize this.
I guess my only feedback, Dave, would be, I I think there should be a public process where it's probably virtual. So you have it, you give people opportunity online to to make comments. Um and then uh the other question I, so you're asking the administrative staff to make five and fifty percent cuts in their own building? Is that what we're asking them to do?
What we did is we had them look at their own budgets um and provide their experience with their individual budgets, both department heads. Anyone who owned a budget, we had them provide those um that feedback. And then the cabinet will kind of come together and trying to try to weave this into a a plan. What we didn't have principals do is talk about um like number of days. We we didn't have them suggest anything like that. That's really kind of a holistic approach. What we wanted to know is, what's your priority inside your own um budget? I don't think um, I think the the best plan would be to look at those ideas and then try and figure out what we're gonna do across the district. Because I don't think, you know, one principal may have a priority of this and another principal might have a priority of that. I think what we were really looking for is what kind of innovative ideas do they have and what could we then do across the district?
That makes sense, and I I guess I would hold those days in my back pocket just in case. So I I think this process, I I guess, maybe just making sure that you we give the community opportunity make to have input at some point.
What was one of the things in my own mind is I definitely believe that we, especially at the timing of it, a virtual process will be important. But I was also thinking that there is probably a public part of this that I just need to maybe get out into one or two buildings on the east side, one or two buildings on the west side. And just do a nighttime activity, just to make sure the people, um whatever we come up with, can provide feedback. That's kind of what was going through my head.
I think that's a good idea.
Hey, Dave, I just have a question about um, you know, um. I I guess it's it's more down the road into the fall. I you know, I read more and more about, you know, if schools open or when schools open in the fall, it's gonna be more expensive uh to do that for a number of reasons, whether it's cleaning or sanitizing or whatever. Are are we are we are we in this budgeting process? Are we putting a placeholder for something like that across the district maybe?
Um so yes, my and the reason I'm I'm hedging is because I don't think I know the amount.
Yeah.
But what I do know is um OASBO is meeting to kind of talk through with um ODE about just that topic, which is specifically in the fall with increased hygien- hi- um hygiene and the different things that. Is there something that we should be doing as a state to add um some budget amounts around this?
Okay.
But I don't really know um how much that is and where they're going. But I know folks are talking about this because it will be an impact at the beginning. I don't know, I'm I'm catching Eileen, but Eileen, have you heard anything about this yet or have any other feedback on that?
I haven't heard anything with the state groups that I've been listening in on um as far as that piece. But I have been working with a custodial and maintenance and food service to look at what made things look like and what may our options be next year, just to start doing some digging. Um we haven't, you know, finalized anything until we know what the plans are, but we are definitely looking at what are some of those options and costs associated to it.
Yeah, I I didn't, I maybe I misspoke. I didn't mean an actual dollar figure, but just I think some of those are. I I think I think there's going to be something that has to be done and that that'll cost money, so I guess.
Absolutely. I will say just one other thing, just for the boards. Um ODE has been working on the guidelines for opening, like what's expected? What's the hand washing required guidelines and requirements? What's the face covering guidelines and requirements? And how are we gonna run our schools in these social distancing times? What I'm hearing right now is they're supposed to deliver those guidelines who is before June eighth. I'm hearing they may come out before then, which would be great, because the sooner we can get those guidelines, the sooner we can start doing exactly what you're talking about is figuring out, so what's it gonna cost if we're providing face coverings for all of our employees? What does that cost and where does that come out of our budget?
Yeah, yeah, I I mean, it just in the end, it means that you're adding something that you're gonna have to take away somewhere else, so that's all.
Yep.
Um I have a question, uh Dave, what about our legislators? Um typically, when there's money issues, school board members weigh in with the legislators. Um you know, Susan McLean and J- Janelle, Janine Solomon, um you know, there are important things that we see. And where do we get the option as board members throughout the state to say to the legislators? Um this is really important um because, you know, if they're meeting one day and we don't see what they're thinking, um that doesn't seem very transparent or appropriate.
Yeah, so two things I I'll ask that question because I'll talk with Susan and um Janine um coming up here. But the second thing is is your um your group, OSBA, um COSA, and then OEA and OSEA are all working together to lobby um for this and they're they're three all together, they're all in agreement around their priorities. And the number one priority for all of those groups is to maintain the nine billion dollar current service level budget. That's what it costs to run our schools. That's what we need. So that's their number one priority. So they will be lobbying for us and our legislators on that. The second part for them would be to maintain measure ninety eight funding at its um current state. We hired teachers with that, so cuts in the measure ninety eight mean some cuts in programs and and staffing. So um their third priority would be to enact um the student investment account, which is um helping our historically underserved um students. Those are the three priorities, but let me touch base with my folks and find out where you can, when. There will be some lobbying going on, some some furious lobbying. So let me find out how you can express yourselves um that way.
And I would I would add, Kate, that that uh the legislative, I'm on the legislative policy committee and we're meeting again June eleventh, which is, I think, a Thursday, um which I assume is before the legislature convenes. Um and if if anything comes out of that meeting in terms of, you know, what they'd like school board members to do, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Perfect, so I will add in a little bit more public um public process on this. And then we'll, as soon as I can get some dates, I'll start getting stuff scheduled out, like the meetings with board. And and I want to do that ASAP because I know specifically for our budget committee members and the board members, the sooner you get these dates, the better. But I still, if we if I don't have a number and it's July fourth, we're we're we just have to wait. I can't move until I till we know what's gonna happen here.
Right.
Right, okay. Okay, um let's see here. That uh we're, I think that's it for uh uh future, let's see. Last uh future items or board discussion uh is the last item on the agenda and um. I don't know if some if if anybody, any board members have any thing to add to that. It's a pretty, it looks like local option levy uh is on the list, a long range facility plan is on the list. Um grade configuration, Gales Creek, school eval and future school site. So those are the items on the list. If any comments about those or anything else to add at this time, any any board members? Uh if not, I we will uh move to uh adjourn the meeting then. And and we'll adjourn for this evening at six fifty two PM.
All right, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, good night.
Hi.